Is coffee or water?
Both.
Both. Do we need to bang ourselves into existence, or is this just an administrative cold start?
I think it's just an administrative cold start, but we have the members of the Finance Committee here, so I think it would be appropriate to go ahead and move forward. I know that Mr. Tyner is in route and on his way, so we'll go ahead and begin for the sake of time, because although this is, the good news is, it's shorter than last year's presentation, it's still rather lengthy, but it certainly gives you an idea of the scope and the thought that went into this budget, these budget recommendations to you. I'd like to begin by thanking our budget team, Carly, Becky, Ashley, Holly, Rayanna. I've spent, it feels like, a lot of hours with them over the past couple of months, and they've spent even more time than that, probably triple to quadruple the amount of time, in putting together today's budget. It's not as simple as PowerPoint slides, as y'all well know, and there's a lot of, certainly there's a lot of accounting that goes into this, a lot of strategic thought, budget planning, and you certainly will get a feel for that over the next several weeks. I also want to thank Richard Rush and Sarah Gilmore for their work in putting together today's presentation. As you can imagine, trying to communicate a budget is a challenge in and of itself. It's not easy to communicate something that can be difficult and as time-consuming and as complicated as our budgets are at the City of Tuscaloosa, and Sarah in particular has worked extremely hard on this and has done a fantastic job. I want to thank Stacy Cooper in my office, who I know has done a lot of legwork on this and has been relentless in the scheduling, so I can have one more meeting to understand this one more time. I can't thank Stacy enough. And our department heads, who begin the process in the spring, who begin to define what they need within their departments, begin to look at their strategic plans, to see what could possibly be funded in the future, and they have done a fantastic job. And lastly, we do have, Mike Wright is the Cal Ripken of when it comes to city budgets. He told me he has not missed one of my budget presentations, which means the decades he did, the two decades before they did budget presentations before I was elected, gives you a sense that the father of finance is here today, and so he has yet to miss a budget, and I'm certainly glad to have Mike here. When I was elected mayor, I was 32 years old, and I think back on that and how fortunate I was to have leaders in the city like Mike Wright, who taught me so much about finance and responsibility. And so, Mike, I'm certainly glad you are here. You're a hero of mine, and I hope this budget wouldn't disappoint you. So, let's jump in to the budget itself and get to work. This budget does many, many great things. One of the things it does is invest over $7 million into our public education system. It invests 76.7 million into public safety, and I would dare say that public safety is our number-one responsibility. It invests 19.9 million into roads and stormwater, 3.4 million into paving, and 67.2 million into water and sewer. And something that I know the council is excited about is to invest an additional $354,385 in the code enforcement, and I'll be sharing a little bit more about this later on in the presentation. One of the things that we do at the city is make certain that the recommendations that are coming to you from our team embody our core beliefs, our four core beliefs, which guide us in our decision-making here at the city. Everything we do should fall in one or more of these core beliefs. So, as we look at the budget, the first thing, let's look at the fund balance, where we ended the year. Our fund balance for 2021, which is over here, you'll see, was 58.5 million. The fund balance at the end of '20 was 52.9 million, so a very good year at the city. Now, one of the things that we will talk about in a little bit is what you see right here, water and sewer. Water and sewer on the fund balance side was down, and as you recall, last year, we had historic rain in the past fiscal year, which contribute to a large portion of that fund balance decrease. But on the general fund side, you see the increases here and here, and so overall, that gives you affirmation of the city's strong financial health. So let's begin our journey today on the budget presentation with the general fund. First, I always like stacking us up against our competition, so to speak. So, we took the 10 largest cities in Alabama, and we looked at their city sales tax rate. Of course, every community is ultimately judged by their county tax rate, but you know, being council members, that it's really the rate, for example, you see in Mobile, of 5%. The city is 3%. Now, this is a straight apples-to-apple comparison, so it's the city's sales tax rate, it doesn't include any of their county rates, like we don't include our county rates. But even if you wanted to cheat and do that, we would be at 3.57%, so we would still be on the bottom half. Again, straight apples-to-apples, you see that we're doing a very good job of managing the city's finances while keeping our city's sales tax rate, which is 47% of our overall general fund revenues, low. So when you look at debt service, and certainly as we begin this journey in Elevate, as we'll talk about a little bit later on, we wanted to see how we compare with our peers. So this chart gives you an idea of where our peers were at the close of fiscal 2021, and to give you an idea, too, of their overall debt service as a percentage of budget. Again, you see Tuscaloosa is in that bottom half as compared to the rest of our peer group. So to just put it on chart form, to make it easier to understand, it gives you a sense of Huntsville is here at 384, and Dothen is here, and Dothen certainly benefits by two things, a 4% tax rate, but also the ability to use their water, sewer, and power utilities to help with their general fund revenue. The ability of not having a power, the ability of having a power utility, where you see in a lot of the TVA areas of the state, or the rural co-ops, mainly in the Wiregrass of Alabama, those have benefits for those county governments and municipalities. Again, you see Tuscaloosa is on the bottom half, or is halfway to the bottom half, and again, we put in the tax rate, the city's sales tax rate, to give you a sense of where we are and what we're doing as a city. This chart here, and this will be in your presentation, and certainly it's in your budget books, gives you an idea of our general fund debt that we currently have on the books. This is more for the public to see. It's in your documents, and we certainly will want to go through, go through it with you.
And Mayor, or Sarah, this slideshow we're seeing, that also is in paper form for us?
We can get you, it's online. We can send you a link to it as a PDF, and if you'd like a printed copy, if you will let Vicky or Stacy know, we will get you a printed.
But it's not, it's not in here?
It is in here.
It is in here?
Oh, you got it included in there.
All these dollars will be in here, will also be.
And we have a slide at the end that will show that. So, salaries and benefits is something that is the, it's going to be the dominant cost within the general fund. What we wanted to do in this slide is give you an idea of where Tuscaloosa is compared to National Wage Index and national inflation. So the light blue line that you see here is national inflation. The red line, dotted line, is the National Wage Index. So you see these two lines, and obviously you can see, beginning in '20, going up, is no surprise to everyone. Now, this is not only an impact on the inflationary side, not only in terms of personnel costs, but also in other things we do at the city, whether it's fuel, chemicals, materials, et cetera.
Why are the exempt salaries only depicted from, it's like '20 or '21 onward?
It's at this point last year where we divided out the exempt and public safety.
Okay, prior to that, those lines are one and the same?
Yes, sir. So that's where you see the divergence of lines. So as you can tell, when you look at this here, you see that the city, in terms of inflation, has stayed ahead of the curve in investments for our employees, and that's a good trend line, especially as we are entering into a battle of workforce across this community and across the nation. This slide here gives you a 10-year snapshot of what we've done for our employees on the, we're exempt employees, the both COLA, which is in the gray, and the STEP increase, which is in the gold-shaded bar graph. As you can see from your slide, right here is the only year we were unable to do any sort of increase, whether it was COLA or STEP increase, for our employees, excuse me, for our exempt employees. For our non-exempt employees, again, '21 was the only year in our 10-year snapshot that we've been unable to provide any sort of compensation increase for our employee. I would imagine that fares pretty well against both the public and private sector, and is a reason why, when you saw the bar graph earlier, that we continue to be ahead of those curves. As you recall, you were part of the discussions in December. In April of '22, we officially enacted an additional 2.5% COLA to address the inflation that we were already seeing. The inflation as calculated by the, I think, Bureau of Labor for this area was 5.1%. So we began that journey six months earlier by implementing a COLA increase in April. That gave us a little bit of cushion heading in to the budget year. So as you look at public safety employees, they did not receive that same COLA because their new pay plan went into effect in April. This gives you a sense, again, of their increases over the last 10 years, like the exempt and non-exempt employees. 2021 is the only year which we were unable to provide any increases in compensation for our firefighters and police officers. What you're going to see in this year's budget is also a 6.6% increase in health insurance, 4.9 because of prior-year claims, and 1.5 for the additional cost of therapies that were added a month ago. This will be the impact to employees on the different coverage, so if you're an employee, single coverage, you have a $15.22 increase under option 1, and you have a $12.74 monthly increase under option 2. I won't read each one out to you, but it gives you a sense of the health insurance increases that we have.
Well, what's the total amount? What's single coverage for the city employees?
In terms of?
Like per month?
Per month?
Do you know?
I would have to defer.
I'm just curious. And family? What was, what is monthly single coverage for health? And monthly family, or employee, whatever?
The city is self-insured. We pay the claims, direct claims of our health insurance costs. That number is then provided by Blue Cross Blue Shield on what they project the cost of insurance to be. The city pays 70% of the health insurance costs, employees pay 30%.
So they have to put in 500 a month, roughly, for full family?
What was that? I mean, for full family was what, Carly? It was about five, it was like about $500 a month for an employee. And then, single was how much? They have to put in? So they have to put in $245.
That's a month?
A month. But family coverage for, yeah, $595 is not bad. It's pretty good.
Not paying more than that.
It's not bad. I know it sounds high, but it isn't bad. Any more questions on health insurance? So when we look at the cost increase of health insurance, what we decided to do, because one of the things we always hear is that the cost of health insurance exceeded my pay increase. Here is the data that doesn't support that. Again, the health insurance increase is something that certainly none of us want for any of our employees, but it's a factor of having health insurance. So if you have someone on a full-family plan, the annual cost next year is projected at 368. Assuming an anniversary date of 9/30, which is the last day to have your anniversary date under our pay schedule, the minimum COLA increase to an employee next year would be $896.22. So it still would be a $400-plus pay increase for our employees. I'm not saying that's enough for the lowest-paid employee of the city, but it does give you a sense of the health insurance costs versus what is going to be recommended in terms of pay increases for our employees. Switching to, and we're going to get in a little bit more detail later on this, switching to the revenue history on the general fund side, again, you can look through this chart to see the jump that we're taking from fiscal '22 to fiscal '23. This does not include any debt issuance proceeds or pass-throughs from the public schools. There's the 20% of the 3-cent county-wide sales tax that passes through the city, that ultimately is transferred over to the city schools.
Are any of the government program funds that came sort of post-COVID, are they included as revenue, or are they shown separately?
This is only general fund, so this is, does not include any COVID.
This is pure, real, generated revenue?
Yes, sir. This is all of the taxes that are enacted via sales tax, business licenses, of that
So looking at the revenue sources within the general fund, as I mentioned earlier, sales and use tax make up 47% of the city's general fund revenues. 14% come from business licenses, 12% come from property tax, 6% come from lodging tax, 4% comes from commercial rental, 4% comes from environmental services subsidy, and that, and, excuse me, and 3% comes from ESD. This number here is the money that's transferred in from Elevate into the general fund, and these are the revenues that we currently collect from ESD. We'll talk a little bit about that in a second. The other includes, but is not limited to, interest income, building permits, bank excise tax, transfers, road and bridge funds, and other small funds that we just, for the sake of this chart to show you, just put into one, one slide. So looking at my recommendations that'll be coming to you for budget projections, first let me start with the highlighted rows here. These three revenue for the city are the only ones that I'm projecting any increase in funding for, and I'll talk a little bit more about why in a second. The remainder of these, I am recommending level funding based off prior-year revenues. With the uncertainty that we see in the economy, I think projecting any growth in these major line items would probably be a little bit ambitious, and there's no empirical, empirical data that I can provide you to, that I think could justify you in going beyond prior-year collections. Certainly, you'll have a few more weeks than I did to work on this budget, and you might find a better cause than I did, or might have better revenue numbers to work with, but at this time, our team would recommend that in city sales tax, property sales, excuse me, property tax, county sales tax, rental license tax, use tax, and liquor tax, that we go off prior-year collections.
So, can we back up one sec, Mayor? I got a little confused. You mentioned projecting level funding, but we're talking about revenues. Do you mean level revenue growth, or? I, when you say level funding related to revenues, I got lost there.
I think I can explain it better in the next few slides, so give me a chance, and then I'll come back to it. So if you look at city sales tax, between 2017 and 2022, we've had an average of three, or excuse me, '21, we've had an average of 3% growth. This year, we project that we will collect $45 million, $45 million, $39,000 in city sales tax. We're recommending that we use what we project we will collect as the revenue number for fiscal year '23, that we do not project any growth off this line item.
So we're projecting at the end of '22 to have collected 45?
45 million, 39,000.
And 45 is what we're using for our '23 basis for expense?
And the, and Becky, and I'd ask Becky to correct me if I'm wrong, but the 45 million comes from what we have collected to date, and then assuming that we will only collect what we collected the same month last year for the rest of the year. So even of its, even that number is conservative, but I think that will give us, again, we don't know what the next three to six months, and you read different economists, you know, theories about what we will see, it's different. It's all over the board. Certainly Tuscaloosa has had a bit of immunity over the decades, being a college city, but I don't think it's, I don't think it would be wise for us just to assume that our revenue source that is 47% of our general fund is going to grow by 1 or 2%. Looking at county sales tax, we've averaged 4.3% from 2017 to 2021. Again, being a major revenue source, we believe that we will collect by September 30th, $20,755,000. Therefore, we would recommend to the city council that that be the budget for fiscal year '23. Now, business license is going to be a little bit different, and I'll explain why in a second. Business license growth between 2017 to 2021 is 1.2%. Now, a lot of that is factored into the COVID year that we all remember and experienced. This year, we have seen our business license growth go from 19.9 million to a projected 22.1 million, and this number is nearly all collected. Most of our business license revenue are, is completed by early spring. So this is a growth item that we feel confident we can give a 2% growth rate. Adding to our rationale is that the sales tax growth that we've seen, we know that business licenses are based off prior-year sales. So those prior-year sales give us the indication and the growth for the business license. Business licenses, unlike sales tax, is a look in the past. Sales tax, when you're projecting, is a look in the future. Business license is a look in the past. So we feel confident in doing a 2% increase. Again, 2% is not wildly exaggerated, but we do feel comfortable in doing that. I think that line item will clearly exceed budget. When you look at property tax, we are going to recommend that we hold even. Certainly, we believe and know that property values have continued to increase, but if you look over the historical trend from '17 to '21, but carrying over to any '22, some years you flatline, some years you jump. Some years you flatline, some years you jump. It's hard to get a bead on exactly what will happen, knowing there may be some randomness to it. We don't think it will decline, but we think, let's go ahead and just budget level funding or prior-year funding for fiscal '23. In terms of lodging tax, this is another revenue line item that we feel comfortable in including an increase to the city council, in large part because we have a major hotel that's coming on, with the Alamoite Hotel, and the room nights that it will generate, and this increase is after the incentives that will be paid out on that. Our team has looked closely at the financial data and feel comfortable in that 5% increase in lodging tax. The other thing that gives me comfort in recommending that to you, this only represents 6% of our general fund budget, whereas property tax is 14%, and, excuse me, 12%, and lodging tax is around 6. I feel very comfortable that we will be close to the mark on that. I want to switch gears and talk about environmental services rates. Environmental services, the rate today that it costs the city to provide a residential customer is $29.67 a month. If we wanted to break even in environmental services, that is what we would charge each residential customer per garbage cart for the service they receive. Before Elevate Tuscaloosa, the city charged $19.75, which at the time provided about a eight to, seven to eight-dollar subsidy a month for taxpayers. After Elevate, as you recall, we took 5 million of Elevate proceeds, and we used it to reduce the environmental service fee down, and we put that over a 10-year period. That 5 million has been, is budgeted to be in place over 10 years. So today, the cost is $3.25. We're recommending, in order to stay within the range of those subsidy amounts, that we move $2 per month to keep the environmental services within those ranges that had been historically assigned. If you don't, then of course, year by year by year by year, that number's going to continue to grow. So let me give you a chart that gives you an idea of what we're seeing. Again, this point in time here is when Elevate came into being, and then you begin to see the increase here. We have not adjusted this for two years. So the past two years, we have not adjusted the environmental services rate. So if we do pass the $2 a month, you'll begin to see the trend down. Now, to be clear, to get back to the pre-Elevate rates, you would need to pass a $6 a month increase, and we're not recommending that. Let's just begin the process over the next couple of years of getting back to that pre-Elevate subsidy of $3, of the 5 million that is put into the Elevate budget to keep our rates down. Again, well below market value. Any questions on that before I move on?
So roughly 5 million, that's what we looked at and decided to give back to the people via their garbage cost, and that was to offset the sales tax increase? And do we have anybody from, what did that amount to per person, do we know?
It's $18 per month per residential customer.
So what that $5 million equated to, to the individual customer, was $18 and something?
$18 per month.
Okay.
200 plus, 224, I think something like, or 216 a year.
So at the end of this, what is it, it will, it will equate to per customer?
It'll still be $18 per month.
It'll still be $18 per month?
That $18 per month doesn't change. What we have to do, though, and this was discussed when we passed Elevate, was getting, keeping that $18 a month subsidy in place.
Oh, God, a spreadsheet.
Now, we just want to back up what we, what we're sharing with you. If you don't, then that subsidy amount.
Carly, haven't we told you all about letting him play with these at home at night?
If we didn't have evidence, then you would say we don't provide you any evidence to why you're making the recommendation.
I'm just funning with you, Mayor.
Man, don't make fun of our spreadsheets, man.
If he loses his place, he's got to start over.
Yeah, that's right. So if you want to keep that $18 a month as a subsidy amount, you have to continue the increase going in the future, because costs don't remain static, as you well know. In 20, excuse me, in '21 and '22, we did not raise the rates to keep them in that $18 range, which is why we're saying, you know, it's $6 to get there. What we're recommending is, look, let's just begin that phase in now, moving forward. If you don't, the net effect, if you said, no, we don't want to do it, we want to keep it at 325, there's really only two avenues from that point. General fund can continue to subsidize even more of it, that's one option, or you can take more money out of Elevate to subsidize it. Those are the two other options that would be out there. That would go beyond what we promised and pledged within Elevate, but that's certainly an option for the city council. So we went through that chart. In terms of looking at direct expenditures of the city, you can see that 40% is in public safety, so we certainly invest in the core function of what people expect out of their city in terms of safety. You get a sense of 7.2% that goes into agencies itself, which is actually larger than, say, the IT department, or if we move forward with a CFG department. Again, you get a sense of where, by departments, we invest our money. I'm sure you're happy to know that the council, this is one of the few times you're probably happy to bring Eli's when it comes to cost. Terms of expenditures, overall, 66% of our budget goes into salary. Terms of expenditures, overall, 66% of our budget goes into salary and benefits. And I think that was a nice, you know, if you juxtapose that with what the school system said the other day, about 80% goes into salaries and benefits. 7% goes into agencies, 6% goes into debt service. I know fuel will be a topic that's talked about a lot. We find auto fuel, which is here in the gray. It's about 2% of the city's general fund budget. So it, it's certainly important, every dollar we have is important, but it gives you an overall sense of where the city invests its money. In terms of the public safety fund, if you remember, we created the public safety fund last year, and that was used as the vehicle to, number one, implement a new pay plan, which I think has been viewed very, has been being very successful. And so, number two, as a potential and possibly opportunity to move towards an RSA conversion. So this fund would be used as that foundation. The total revenues that we project for fiscal year, I'm going to start with fiscal year 22, is 3.8 million. We anticipate spending 3.7 million of that amount, and we will have a surplus of $94,000. Now, in my budget recommendations, you will see that I'm recommending $1 million be transferred from our surplus last year and be placed in the fiscal 23 public safety escrow amount. The reason why is so that we, as we begin talking about a conversion in the RSA, we can begin building a nest egg. We know that if a conversion date of 26 or 27 is going to happen, we're going to have to be financially ready for it and have money in reserves to take that challenge on. Certainly, I think, I, I can't speak for all of you, but I think the vast majority of us want to see RSA conversion. But even if that's not possible, we will still have to do something with the police and fire pension. It's not as if, if we don't go to RSA, then there's, there's nothing to deal with on the police and fire pension fund side. So what I would recommend is that we transfer that $1 million into the public safety fund. That's why you see an increase here, but nothing projected here, because we just don't know what our surpluses will be in future years. So that would give us 7 million in revenue. We would project a $4.3 million expenditure side with a surplus of about 2.6 million, which would give us 2.7 as a surplus. So I won't go through the remainder of the items, but by the end of the day, by fiscal 25, we should have a surplus of 8.6 million in this fund. I believe we're being very conservative in our analysis on this. Our goal that we certainly will begin talking about this fall as we begin to prepare for the legislative session is getting ready for RSA conversion. But we would like to begin at a minimum of starting this budget year, working towards that way. Any questions on this? We will certainly get into more detail through the budget hearings over the next few weeks.
So the, um, as we move, if we're looking along the total revenues line up top, and, and we move from 22 to 23, and we go from 3.8 to 7. You said you were recommending that we take a million dollars from this year's surplus, right, and put into that fund?
Yes, sir.
And so that, that bumps us up, uh, a million from the 3.8 to 4.8. What, what's the balance that gets us to the 7?
Right here, the, the amount would be, this, the million below the 7 would be your revenues from, first of all, it'd be this carryover amount of 94 would be included in that.
Yeah.
It would be the revenues, I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me, but it would be the revenues from the 3% increase on student apartments that are more than, um, 200, which is, I think, the primary line. There is the, uh, public safety fee on venues that serve alcohol with more than 1,000, excluding the university. What other revenue sources are in that? The 20.
The Elevate what?
The 20% Elevate transfer.
This year, in terms of, by the way, let me make one other point. The numbers that you see here, which are really the heart and soul of the Elevate budget, that's going to be based off prior year collections. We are not anticipating any growth in this line item. So again, we're saying that what we collect this year will be the revenues that we collect in fiscal year 23. So when you look at the operation and maintenance budget, we'll take a look at that in a second in more detail. This is where that fifteen percent of the Elevate budget will stand. As you recall, as part of our 2019 recommendation to the city council, we set aside a portion of Elevate funds to go to the operations of Elevate facilities and Elevate programs. So this year, the total crew salaries and benefits would be three hundred and forty-two thousand. This is primarily the crews for the Northern River Walk, River District Park, and then the anticipation of adding on anything with the Western River Walk as well. The ninety-five thousand are the various operating costs that you need. Utilities for those different parks is at two hundred and thirty-five thousand. Any capital cost related to those crews at one hundred and fifty thousand with an undesignated reserve of two point one million. And we'll go through this in a little bit more detail in a second. So you see the revenue history of Elevate Tuscaloosa. Again, even going off prior year funding, you see quite an increase from twenty-two to twenty-three. One of the things that we'll be recommending to this council is the creation of the River District Fund. You've been briefed on this. It is currently the amphitheater fund that exists today. The amphitheater fund is responsible, not only just for the amphitheater, but for the river walk between the amphitheater and the river market and the river market itself. The primary revenue source within the amphitheater fund is the two percent lodging tax, and we would like to expand this, certainly and expand the Elevate revenues that will be part of it, to include the Saban Center and potentially an event center for the city of Tuscaloosa. We'll go in more details in a little bit about the River District Fund. I just want to briefly talk about what we've been able to accomplish in twenty-two. The Northern River Walk, and I saw Dr. Randall this morning, she again expressed her just astonishment at the quality of what we were able to do and our team was able to accomplish with the Northern River Walk. It has certainly become one of our popular parks. Just last week, we approved the new TPD hangar, which will get rid of this hangar that you see here. I know Mr. Busby would like to add a few more helicopters.
I also hope we could get a submarine.
Yeah. It's kind of, actually, Mr. Busby, don't encourage, don't encourage that. Bowers Park paving, which I know Mr. Bell, one of the things he wanted to get done and got accomplished, and some annual projects that are ongoing and initiatives. Certainly, as we talked about earlier, that five million is going to continue to provide a two hundred dollar benefit to our citizens of Tuscaloosa in subsidizing the environmental services fee. As we talked about earlier, twenty percent of Elevate funds, one out of every five, goes into public safety and in particular into what is now making us have a competitive pay plan and ultimately, and you know, possibly could get us into eventually RSA. Of course, I'm very proud of what we're doing education-wise. Certainly, what it's done for pre-K, as you heard with the Board of Education. Everyone who wanted pre-K got pre-K, and there's very few in any cities in Alabama that can say that, and these beautiful children in this picture are going to have a brighter future because of it. Summer learning program, which not only helps with summer learning loss, but helps with COVID learning loss that we see. And the fifteen hundred students across this city have benefited. My own child has benefited from this program. I bet you you know as well, it's done superbly by the city schools. Something that I'm extremely proud of is dual enrollment. In two thousand and twenty-two, two hundred and fifty-four students get this, earn one thousand one hundred and seventy-three credit hours for college. They got a head start on their college career. More than eighty percent of children that participate, whether in college or career readiness, graduate from those programs. This city is making this possible, and I'm very proud. Here's what I'm even more proud of. The success of this program and the stewardship, the financial stewardship of it. This year, we're going to be able to do tenth graders through twelfth graders. Tenth grade is the first year you're eligible, and we go from six hours to nine. This, again, is another remarkable accomplishment, and it's only for city school students. So I'm very proud that it is reaching our children in our public schools and giving them an opportunity. You heard Dr. Daria in the stories he talked about, in particular Bryant High School and what it's done. We're excited about what it's going to continue to do for the young people of Tuscaloosa. Skill Trades Academy, I don't have to sell this, I think y'all are as equally impressed as I am with it and what they're doing. This dollar, these dollars go to scholarships for residents of the city of Tuscaloosa to get into this program that Gary Phillips deserves so much credit for implementing. So some of the ongoing projects that we have out there, the Saban Center, you're well-versed in that, and this year, we're kicking off the design phase. Western River Walk, we should be under construction. Hopefully, we'll be on bids on the pedestrian bridge, possibly the River Walk itself in the fall. Certainly, construction should begin on one or both by winter of twenty-three with an opening date a year from there. Again, this is one of the exciting projects we have with Elevate. I know this is, I believe this is partially your project. I hate that Mr. Tyner's not here. Phase one of Snowhin Park.
I think Mr. Tyner has started this perhaps, but I'll take credit for it when we finish.
Well, I didn't know if you were going to.
He's not here, you, I'd take credit for it now.
I didn't know if you were going to amend it just to do your side of, District Six side of Snowhin Park.
Oh, no.
Again, this is Tuscaloosa Central Park, probably our most prominent park in the city, and certainly it needed a two-point-oh. Phase one will begin that process. Sokol Park, construction is underway with turn lanes, new parking lot, and you'll see in our Elevate proposal, we are actually going to recommend that we take that out of a bond issuance Sokol Park, and we look at doing just yearly investments. I'll go through that in just a little bit. River District Park, which should be open fairly soon. Labor Day-ish sometime soon. The final touches are being done on this magnificent park, and we're excited about what it's going to do as the hub for the Western River Walk. Benjamin Barnes YMCA, which you were briefed on at the last projects meeting. Certainly, we believe this year is a doable timetable to get design moving on that project. And we also have money that will be scheduled in coming years for a Phase Two to McDonald Hughes, which will tie in to Benjamin Barnes YMCA. Tuscaloosa Tennis Center, design is underway, and I believe Mr. Tyner will get a briefing next week on this project. University Boulevard Corridor, Mr. Busby, I know this is part of your district, it's part of Mr. Tyner's district. The one concern that I do have on this project is that this project was awarded prior to the forty percent increase in heavy infrastructure increases that we've seen in the past year. You will see as part of my recommendations to you that the seven hundred thousand that we had budgeted in RFFI for the University Boulevard Bridge be applied to this project. Also, the one point four million dollars that we had permitted ALDOT instead of providing it to the city to use towards that project, that that too be allocated towards this project. The reason why is that one point four million, and I know I'm jumping into way more details than I wanted to today, those dollars were meant for communities that were impacted by the April twenty-seventh. That was part of the state's design to help us. So again, we will discuss that more in the capital projects budget. We want to begin building some more dollars into this project because we know the grant, the submittals, those were two years ago. There's no way these costs are going to meet what is coming in the future. Next is, and I'm going to, what I'm going to do is ask to take a quick break after I get finished with the Elevate portion of the slideshow and then go to spreadsheets. You heard me talking yesterday or Monday, excuse me, about the Athletic Excellence Fund. We'll be recommending a half million dollar initial investment, and I'm going to walk you through that in more detail in just a second. Lake Nickel and Harris Lake, we want to begin making the master plan improvements that hopefully will be adopted in the future. We think this can be one of the crown jewels of Tuscaloosa. There's not many communities that have two thousand plus acres and six billion gallons of water preserved for the future. And we know that outdoor recreation is what people want to see more and more and more of, and we want our lakes to be accessible and used, and we want to begin those processes to begin the investments. We're also recommending a half million from Elevate to use for the Phelps Boat Landing. In fact, what, one of the things we would ask this council to do is take a hard look at all of our activity centers, and one of the things we think we need to do is take a hard look at Phelps.
That's not the artist rendering of the proposed.
No, that's existing one.
That's what it looks like now.
Yeah. Now, if you like that, Mr. Busby.
It looks worse than that, really.
And there's also one off.
Move that to your district, if you like.
There's also one off to your right. I know, y'all know James Lefoy. James has an amazing vision for our lakes, and this is something him and I spent a lot of time on. He's taken me out here a few times, and he has a vision for what that peninsula or that landing, Phelps Landing, could look like and be. And I'm excited to get the feedback from the discussion the other night, but we certainly want to begin making improvements. The public should have access to their lakes, and this is one of those natural access points into Lake Tuscaloosa. So what I would like to do here is take a ten, fifteen-minute break, let everybody stretch their legs, then I will go through, I know Mr. Busby will be excited, we're going to go through the Elevate spreadsheets quickly, I promise, and then we will turn our attention to the water and sewer fund. So right now, it's two twenty-four, why don't we come back, say, two thirty-five? We will first begin with the Athletics Excellence Fund spreadsheet that you have in front of you. I know that you were provided a copy of this when we met with the board Monday night. But just to briefly go through it, and let me mention, the documents that we're sharing will be online for the people of Tuscaloosa to take a look at as well. The recommendation that we have from you has been born out of a couple of things. First, this really was a discussion that started about two years ago with school personnel, athletic personnel, coaches that were within the system. It then expanded to active members of the different athletic teams at all three high schools and the coaches themselves. Finally, this summer, Dr. Daria and I got an opportunity to spend some time together. It married well with the study they were doing internally as they're looking at how to be competitive in athletics. And then you layer on top of the recommendations that came out of Project Unity, which were certainly important. Those recommendations led to Benjamin Barnes Branch YMCA as one example. Another recommendation came in to keeping our youth busy between the hours of three and eleven. And as we know, that's the highest crime period in the city of Tuscaloosa, and we've also seen in recent years an ever-increasing amount of juvenile crime in our community. There's only one institution that touches the majority of our children and young people in Tuscaloosa every single day, and that's Tuscaloosa City Schools in some form or fashion. And athletics, as you saw in the data that was presented Monday night, not only has a positive impact in terms of almost fifty percent of the student body participates in some sort of athletic program at the middle or high school level, their combined GPAs are higher than the average student body. So we know that being with caring adults who are passionate about student athletes is a value-added to an academic education. We also have to acknowledge that the city schools and some sports are not performing at the level that we certainly would want them to perform. And when you talk to the coaches in these sports, one of the big issues is just supplements. What it takes to pay for coaches, what it takes to attract coaches and to be successful. And I think you will see the school board study that they've done will reflect just that. Knowing all of this, we would like to recommend that, beginning in fiscal year twenty-three and then increasing by two to three percent annually, an Athletics Excellence Fund of half a million a year that would go to the city schools. There would be some caveats with that. Thirty-three point three percent would go to the Central High School Zone, thirty-three point three percent would go to the Northridge High School Zone, and thirty-three point three percent would go to the Bryant High School Zone. You can see in the third table on this sheet how that money would be broken out per year. So this would make both middle schools and high schools eligible for those dollars. This would be an annual funding contract between the city schools and the city of Tuscaloosa. It would be allocated only to the operations of the athletic departments within those high schools and middle schools. The funding can only be used for coaching supplements, coaching compensation and/or facility improvements. The funding, and this is very important, it shall not, it should supplement and not supplant the current funding for the program. So if I'm going to, if Central High School has a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar athletic budget, they can't take our money and then move, you know, and still keep it at two fifty, they'd have to increase it by the amount that we're funding here. They can't supplant those dollars because we want this to be value-added for our young, our young people, our student athletes in these schools. Certainly, this funding has to be appropriated with Alabama law, city law, state law, and then twice a year, the city council and the Board of Education will get a biannual report of how those dollars were expended by the high schools and middle schools. We certainly believe that if we want to go attract more of our young people, why not use the single largest provider of services to young people as a tool and avenue to do it? The data shows it's successful when we can get young people involved, and I will say that the more skilled coaches that you can bring into any sport, whether it's an Olympic sport or, you know, the more prominent sports of football and basketball and softball, the more likely are to recruit more athletes and more people who want to participate. I remember one of the arguments for splitting up Central was to give more young people an opportunity to participate. I think this adds that value. And as Dr. Daria shared with us and the Board of Education shared with us, athletics is not funded by the state of Alabama, it's funded by local dollars. I know we may want to talk more about this later on, but are there any initial questions I can answer for you?
Initially, Mr. Mayor, do we have a number of the total type of sports, the total number of sports, athletics per school? Do we know that? So, because some schools may have, let's say, croquet and others may not have croquet. So. So how will, how will the budget be able to play out, this money, if we pass that?
I can, I believed, and I may not, and so if I haven't, I will resend it. Dr. Daria provided us some information that was forwarded to the Council's attention a couple of weeks ago, but I'll resend that to you. The goal by providing the funding, we're not, we're not sending this funding per student. Most of the times in a school system, it is divided by student on ADM.
Right, ADM, yeah.
As you're very familiar with serving on school.
Right.
The goal is to give each of the three schools, really the feeder, really the clusters, I guess is what the city school, I don't know if they still call them that.
Yeah.
Give each of the three clusters that decision-making ability. I don't, I don't think the city should mandate beyond what we're requiring here anymore. But then they have to report back what they're doing with it. So if there are problems, we can bring it to their attention. Because I worry if we try to micromanage that, it will create, and certainly I think it could create issues with the board. And what I've discovered in my time as an administrator with the city schools, that principal, that athletic director, they know what's going on the ground. They may have a great croquet coach, but they need to invest more in football. You know, so I think we gotta let them determine what's best for their, their schools.
Mayor, I think as we move forward, and this, this would not be the forum to flesh this out.
Right.
But as a heads up, I think if we are talking about adding another half million dollars a year taxpayer money into that to improve the athletic performance of the schools, on the, on the, the logic that you attract, you attract more young people into winning teams than you do to losing teams, is that fair?
I would say that's, that's a fair argument. I would add to that argument, though, the more qualified coaches that you have in that sport are going to draw more people in to a particular sport than not. If you've never been a volleyball coach and you're the non-tenure history teacher, and the principal walks down and you've never played the sport and you say you're going to coach volleyball, and this is an experience I had when I was Personnel Director, normally that volleyball team is not going to succeed because it's going to be very difficult for anyone who doesn't have, is not familiar to succeed. I think this will give the ability to attract more quality coaches who are also teachers into the school system, who then will excel and get more young people.
So, so the, the, the discussion that I hope comes in another forum is, I, I think some sort of performance matrix needs to be developed that we can apply to that so that we know not only what's being done with the money, but what results did it deliver? And I don't, I don't know enough about it to define those results. I don't know if it's W's and L's out beside major sports, or if it's head count participation in the sports we're trying to attract. But, but I think it's incumbent that we have some sort of performance criteria associated with that. And again, this is not the forum for that.
I, I think that's very fair. And one of the things maybe the Finance Committee would like to do is invite Dr. Daria and whoever he believes are the subject matter experts to the hearing on that. Because in some feeder patterns in the cluster, some want more of a focus on middle schools, others want more of a focus on high schools, they could then help us provide the metrics by which to measure success. And I agree with you, if this doesn't reach our young people, that's who we're really trying to reach. You know, winning games is nice, getting young people involved in the lessons of athletics and any extracurricular activity is the value that we're really certain.
And again, I, I don't know what the, whether it's W's and L's or this many kids participate, but the people who are in that profession, that, that vocation should know it. And, and I think that should be associated with this, this decision.
Absolutely.
And, and Mr. Mayor, I thank you for bringing that out, and you certainly Colonel Busby. Because I'm, I'm not a footballsman, but I do, I am a band singer, and, and I want this committee to also look at, I know that we only have 22 people on the football field at a time, but I do know that instrumentalists get more scholarships and more opportunities and inter, and more intellect. So next couple of years, I want us to begin to put a focus on music and how that will enhance the quality education of our children.
Absolutely. And I do think for those that will be watching this, either who are watching this now or will be watching it later, you were provided the spreadsheet by the A&amp;F Department, but the city does $6.2, $6.3 million in additional funding to the school system that covers everything from pre-K to security to dual enrollment. This is not as if it would be the only thing we're doing.
Right.
We are doing a lot on many different levels. So this again is a, is a value-added to what they're doing. And I appreciate the Council's consideration, and I think you make a very valid point, Counselor Wilson. Let me transition to the Elevate spreadsheet, the first one in your packet, because there are some changes, and I want you to be aware of these changes as we're going into the budget season. We went over the revenues earlier. The only thing that changed or was not listed out in the slide was we anticipate this year a $14 million carryover, which if you look at the revenue section, it's about seven lines down. So we, I'm sorry, we anticipate a $3.1 million. We had a $14 million carryover from '22. You see the 3.123 carryover from '22 to '23. The other revenue item that we didn't talk much about is what we anticipate the foundation capital campaign in terms of revenues to be. And so you see that number there. As you know, I think we're all very confident in the work that Brandt Lepish and Audrey Buck have been doing. And so you see those revenue numbers there. As you look down to '23, let me work through some of the changes that we, the major changes. One, the Athletics Fund that we just went over, you see the $500,000 in fiscal year '23. The first major change in terms of bond issuance is we're recommending taking Sokol Park out of a 2025 bond issue. It appears that the improvements that we need to make in Sokol Park are not necessarily large and sweeping. They can be done in segments. You were briefed on one project about, well, when we did the bids for the turn lanes in the parking lot, they went into detail of what else needs to be done, including additional parking lots, lighting, et cetera. Instead of going to the market to borrow for that, Elevate has the capacity and bandwidth to go ahead and begin in fiscal '23. We talked earlier about the half a million for Harris Nickel. We're recommending including $300,000 to begin design on Gateway. There's, I know Mr. Tyner has been involved in those discussions. An additional $250,000 to the money that's already budgeted for civil rights trail to begin design on that. As you go down the sheet, you see the payoff of the line of credit, the 15% Elevate Operation and Maintenance Fund, the $5 million environmental services fee, and then you see that beginning in '23, the Public Safety Fund goes from a net of 15% to 20%. As we go through the proposal that is in front of you, you then hit the fiscal '21 debt service. You see Northern River Walk, River District Park, and Western River Walk. Fiscal '23, which the council just authorized, the Benjamin Barnes YMCA, and the Snow Hen Park, Tuscaloosa Tennis Center, and University Boulevard corridor. So here's where we see some changes. Fiscal year '24, with the council's decision for design, we went ahead and moved in an amount for the event center with a bond issuance projected in '24. We think it actually probably wouldn't surface to '25 in terms of the first debt service payment, but we went ahead and plugged a number into '24, just in case. So that's one change. And again, as we've discussed, this doesn't move the council forward with it, it's just for planning and budgeting purposes, because this is not fiscal '23, that would be in fiscal '24. Next, you see that we are moving the '25 bond issue to the '26. The projects will start in '25, but we don't see where those projects that are currently listed are going to be able to get into a bond issue quick enough for '25. I will say there is some great discussions that have gone on recently regarding the Bowers Park and Maccabee Center, and we think those are going to be some opportunities in the future. We also know of what's planned at McDonald Hughes, which is why we would like in '24 to begin moving forward with design of Phase II and include that in a bond issue. And then we've put in, as I mentioned earlier, a half million for the Phelps Center for the, the landing, the docks, that area. I believe that this is a really good time to have some discussions. I know Mr. Phelps, you and I have had some discussions about both Maccabee and Bowers. Mr. Crowe, I know we've had some discussions regarding Phelps, and I know Ms. Howard and I, as recently as Tuesday, had some very positive meetings on McDonald Hughes Phase II. This gives us also some time to work some things out. There are some exciting ideas that are being brought to the table and potential partnerships. So I would imagine there may be some variation in that, but those are the main and significant changes that we are recommending to you. Some of these changes, again, are fiscal '23-related, some are just in the planning document beginning in '24 through '32.
Walt, can, can some of that money potentially, I'm just talking strictly about Phelps, could that be used towards starting working on a design of this is what we kind of want this to potentially look in the future? Because I know there's a $5 million in there, like Elevate, down the road, Elevate project. But, but there's a lot, I mean, people have been talking to me about that. I know you and I talked about several ideas to reposition that in a different way. But when, when could that start? Like where you could have ideas and come up with a master plan for that?
The, the docks themselves, the initial projection we got was around a quarter of a million. We put in a half million just not knowing what pricing.
Sure, sure.
I would say if there's any dollars that are left over, we, we could begin programming that to an overall master plan and move forward with that process. The other project, by the way, I want to note that we moved out of the fiscal '25 bond issue was Harris Nickel Water Recreation Trails. Again, we took two projects. One of the things the council said is you want us to do more pay-as-we-go with some of these Elevate projects. We felt with Sokol we could do that, and we could also do that with Harris and Nickel Recreation Projects. So those two have been moved out and paid for, as you see, over time. Any questions on that? So the next sheet that you have is just the updated schedule, if the council approved this, of what the bond issue schedule would be. Let you take a look at that. The '26 bond issue, we're projecting at $70,000 per million. It remains to be seen if that's too low or too high, and I don't know if any of us know at this point what the next year is going to bring. We've been very fortunate to be at or below our projections thus far, but that gives you a sense of the scheduling. For us, though, the realignment of these, of a few of these projects have more to do with the timing than it does anything else that allowed us either not to put them in a debt service or move them back. And you're going to continue to see that with these projects, as you know. So the next sheet that I just want to briefly touch on, you are very familiar with, is the Elevate Operation and Maintenance Fund at 15%. This will continue to evolve and change. The main thing that I'd like to focus on today is the River District Fund proposal. You're very familiar with this. This would allow us, if the, certainly I think the Sabin Center will move forward, but the event center, if the event center comes online, to be able to move this in a style of fund that has been very successful for the city with the amphitheater. I won't go into detail today, I know you're very familiar with this, but this gives you a breakout of where we see that going over the next 10 years. And then the last thing that I think is the most important is what will be the revenues over expenditures over time. So if we do everything that the spreadsheets project out, at the end of fiscal '23, we would have an $8.3 million balance. 10 years from now, we would have a $9.2 million balance. So we, that gives us really great comfort that we're moving in a very conservative, methodical fashion, and we look forward to getting into more details with you during the budget hearing process. In the meantime, if you have any questions, please let us know. As we continue to update our projections, because the projections for '22 move every single moment of every single day, we will continue to update these spreadsheets to reflect those projections and notify you of any significances. I don't anticipate if anything, they would be to the better and not to the worse. Any other questions or any concerns? All right, guys, we're in the tail end. Let's get to water and sewer. So looking at the revenue history of water and sewer, I want to draw your attention to this flat line here. And we discussed this last year, but I think, again, it's something that really supported your willingness to treat this as a business. As I shared with you last year, one of my frustrations in years past had been that, you know, the council had treated this more as a political and governmental activity instead of as a utility. And you believe, like we, the administration, believed that we have to treat this as what it is, a utility. As you know, we're one of the three utilities in Alabama, governments, excuse me, that runs a utility, a water and sewer utility, which I realize puts council members, and certainly even the mayor, in a difficult position. But at the same time, we have an obligation to run it in a fashion that ensures that it's here 20 years from now, 30 years from now, 40 years from now. And you know it's a valuable asset. How many people approach the city wanting to buy our water and sewer asset? A lot. And I can't ever imagine ever wanting to sell our water and sewer utility. It is an asset for the city, and hopefully my children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren will enjoy that asset as well, and I hope the city never gives it up.
Okay.
So, the Water and Sewer, as I mentioned earlier, fund is an enterprise fund, and it must pay for itself. Now, the council adopted plan calls for 11.1% increase in fiscal year '23. That would be recommending a, that is adopting the 6% for the capital fund along with the 5.1% that came with inflation. The increase, as you can imagine, certainly has an impact on every one of our constituents. So what I would recommend to the city council would be lower than what is in the council ordinance, a flat 10% increase. And then work to catch that up in the next two years, that 1.1%. Right now, if you adopted the 10% increase, the average ratepayer would pay $6.38 more per month. So that's the average bill in the city of Tuscaloosa, they would pay $6.38 more per month.
Mr. Mayor, I can remember very much, so we talked about the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund and how when the council adopted to move with that increase, we also took into account those who are already having difficulties paying their bills. So is this a recommendation to kind of give a cushion for two years and then enact the 11.1% increase?
No, it would, it would, my recommendation is 1.1% less.
Okay.
Than what the ordinance requires.
Right.
It's, and then that 1.1% to be phased in over time. This year, the water, although the last week, and certainly looking at the next week, our water usage has been higher, and we, we've suffered from a lot of rain, which decreases your water usage. But if you go back to this chart, it's hard to say it's always the amount of rain, excuse me, it's, it's hard to say it's always the amount of rain, I don't know why my stylus is not working, across this, you know, between 2000 working, across this, you know, between 2017 to 2021.
Gotcha.
So, Mayor, in the, in the two years between '21 and '23, moving from 49 and a half to essentially 61, that's, what is that, a 20% increase? And of course, some percentage of that revenue increase is explained by the raising of the rates. But I'm wondering, was it, was it last August, was COVID, you know, there was a period about a year ago when we were perplexed that our water sales were off, was it two or four million? It was a significant amount. Is that picked back up, and is that accounting for part of this revenue growth in the last two years? I mean, a part of that revenue growth is increased rates, check?
Yes, sir.
But that doesn't, that wouldn't appear to me to account for all of it.
I, you know, I don't, I can't.
Do you remember what I'm talking about? Was it COVID, and we were expecting decreases in this and that, and what we're getting unexplained decreases in revenues in our water?
There was, at one time, I think we provided, the council report showed nearly 1.6 million in unpaid bills. That number has gotten down, the last report I had, that number had gotten down to below $500,000. Our annual write-off is around $300,000.
Three hundred-ish a year is about what we planned.
So we've been able, and I give Alvin and his team all the credit, they have literally gone person by person, we've worked with the program that, they provided people assistance with their utility program to help them get caught up on the bills. They've done just the old-fashioned legwork to get people to pay their water and sewer bill. For better or for worse, there was this perception that COVID allowed you, you know, an unlimited time or delay in paying different utility bills. Alvin and his team have approached that and done it in a very humane and a very strategic way to make certain we find people to support they need, but get their bills paid. I'm sure that makes up some of this. But even if you take '17 to '20, or '17 to '19, you see that flat line. We are facing, and this really began in 2011, we lost 4,000 water customers. The majority of the homes that were destroyed in the April 27, 2011 tornado were built between 1972, or before 1972. So they were not energy efficient. Everything, the $1 billion plus worth of new construction, just in that 12% of the city, was all built energy efficient. They use less water. So everything that comes online is using less water, but yet the costs, as you will see, of water and sewer are just rising each and every year. I think that's part of the dynamic. Then you marry in, you know, an unwillingness to raise rates to meet the needs. Then you marry in COVID, then you marry in inflation, and I think all of that would be part of what we see here. But I do think the good news is that you see what you did last year, you see that has worked, and if we're going to maintain and continue to move our water and sewer utility up, we have to continue to call, to charge within the realm, within that margin of error, of what we believe it's going to cost us. Otherwise, you know, puts us in a very difficult position, as y'all know. The other thing, and I think it goes without saying, if someone did buy our utility for $400 million, the first thing they're going to do is
Raise the rates.
Raise the rates dramatically, because we're just looking at breaking even, they're looking at, of course, they have, as any public center would do.
Just a comment about our water, and it doesn't have to do with the price, but our water, so I'm told, is cleaner than this water back here in these bottles. And that's a big deal. We've got to keep that going.
This is an investment into probably the most important utility we have, in terms of whether it's, I know, you know, you make the argument of power, but people will pay a lot more for that iPhone bill and consider that a utility. Water is essential to life. Looking at what we do charge for water, look at us compared to the national average. We're 22 cents cheaper than the national average in producing water. And then you look at what a gallon of milk costs, a gallon of coffee, a gallon of wine, and a gallon of bottled water. It gives you a sense that three, nearly four tenths of a cent is a pretty good bargain for what we provide the people of Tuscaloosa. And then, as I mentioned earlier, there are other utilities that are out there, certainly in power, and cable, and gas, and all of those have seen the same inflationary impacts that we've seen at the city. But I think here's the telling, you know, how do we compare against our peers? You see, as you put in, we included Northport, because Northport is our sister city here, but you include us versus the Big Ten cities, and you see that we're one of the lowest in the state. Again, we're, we're doing, and that's with the rate increase. If you adopted the rate increase, that is with the rate increase. So it gives you a sense, again, of the, of what a good value that we're providing at the city of Tuscaloosa. Here is the overall budget as laid out. Charges for services certainly make up the large amounts. Your, your big swings that you see, transfer from other funds, that is the money from ARP moving in and out of the fund, and then other operating, for the most part, is the water main extension policy that was discontinued several years ago. Those dollars will eventually fade out. In terms of water revenues, with the increase, if it, as proposed, was, if the increase as proposed was adopted, we would project 33 million, 33.8 million. Mr. Busby, the thing, again, you see between '17 and '21, eight tenths of a percent growth in water revenue sales. On sewer sales, again, if you adopt the budget as proposed, we anticipate $25 million. Let me just say, because Becky and Carly and Ashley and Holly and Rayanna would get on to me if I didn't say this, the number, the difference between seeing the projected number for '22 on the water and sewer side than the general fund side, is general fund is collected, whereas we bill on the water and sewer side. Overall, you see the debt service that we have within water and sewer, and we paid off the 2012 A and B this year. So that came off our water and sewer debt. This is the expenditures by type. You see that salaries and benefits make up 23%. This is normal with the utility. Debt service makes up 21%. Depreciation, which you are all very familiar with, makes up 14%, and utilities and phone make up 6%. Certainly, our utility costs have increased, chemical costs have increased, those, when you get into the budget hearings, you're going to see those in the various line items. One of the things I want to take on, we did a good job last year, but continue to talk about, and I know Mr. Wilson and Mr. Crowe are very familiar with indirect costs of dealing with it, with the CMP at the school board, but there are first the direct expenditures that are within the water and sewer department. So the city attorney, accounting and finance, office of city engineer, IT, water and sewer department, and then your debt service, your depreciation, your transfers that come in and out. Those are the things that you can specifically tie to the utility and directly fund. And then there are the indirect costs. And so how is that indirect cost determined by the city? And it's no different than any private sector, public sector standard. The city calculates with a 12% annual rate that's applied to the water and sewer budget. And I'll explain to you in a second why. 12% rate is 6.5 million that is applied, that reimburses the general fund for services. If we were to exactly charge the water and sewer budget, it would be about 6.6 million dollars, nearly 6.7 million dollars. The methodology of using a flat rate is, is an acceptable accounting practice by Gatsby. So certainly, it makes sense. So how do we come up with that number? Office of City Attorney, 36% of the documents that are created are for water and sewer. In Human Resources, 13% are, of our employees are water and sewer. Accounting and Finance takes 37%, which is just the totals of our budget. Facilities Maintenance, the square footage of facilities that the general fund is providing services for, for water and sewer. Municipal Security, same thing, square footage that the general fund is paying for security for, that's then reimbursed. Information Technology, the number of devices that are managed, which are 10% of the devices managed. Mayor and Clerk, number of documents, agenda items that you deal with. Strategic Communications, their public education campaigns that the general fund pays for that then comes back to, is reimbursed to the general fund. And then Fleet Maintenance, the number of vehicles served. We show this to you to say that if the general fund didn't provide these services to water and sewer, water and sewer would have to go out and buy these on their own. That's why it's much cheaper just to have the general fund take this on and get the reimbursement amount. Let me give you a real-life example. Let's say Mr. Phel decides he wants to come work for the water and sewer department. And Ethan here has decided, I'm going to hire Mr. Phel to come work for us, okay? Human Resource, this is just one example, small example. Human Resource will post a position, by way, Human Resource is funded by the general fund. It posts a position for the water and sewer department, it goes out and verifies the background information, it goes through the applications, facilitates the interview process, manages the hiring process, handles the insurance and benefits setup, sets up the time card. Then we go over to Fleet Maintenance, they got to issue and maintain a vehicle over time, and then Accounting and Finance will continue to provide that employee, payroll services, et cetera. That's just one micro example of how it works. And so the general fund is always providing services to the water and sewer fund, and this methodology is how we determine the indirect cost to the general fund. Any questions on that? Carly and Becky and her team, they can describe it much better than I can. But again, I know Mr. Wilson and Mr. Crowe, y'all dealt with this at the school system much more with those federal dollars, plus your Title I programs, your IDEA programs, et cetera. Any questions that y'all have? Okay? So just give you a snapshot of where we are in terms of looking back at 2007. Again, I'm very proud that since 2007, that was my first official budget that Mike Wright guided me through. We were 30% of debt service. Today, we're 21%. And you see on the salary and benefits side, we've actually decreased that number. Again, it gets back to why our rates are comparatively so low. Our team has done an outstanding job of managing their budgets. So let me close with, what does all this mean for taxpayers? So what's going to be the impact to the people we work for every single day? So on the water and sewer side, as you saw earlier, if you're a residential customer, your increase will be $6.38 a month for water and sewer. If you're a commercial customer, that number's going to be $33.03. On garbage, it's $2, both the same for residential and commercial. So if you combine both, it's $8.38 for residential and $35.03 for commercial. As I mentioned to you in an email talking about the budget earlier and described at finance or pre-council meeting, inflation has an impact on this budget, and we can't ignore it. Those same inflationary impacts that everyone feels today are the same being felt on the operations of the city, and in particular, what we deliver on the water and sewer side. This budget reflects that and tries its best to minimalize that, and I think we've done a really good job of striking the balance. I would say, though, that I would be careful of, and I don't think we would, but if we turn this into a political issue, it puts us in a bad position in years ahead of never being able to catch up and never being able to accomplish our goals. One of the things I can say about my four years on the council and '16 as mayor is that we've had a history of tackling these things based off data, and I certainly know that that will continue with all of you, because you've been very thoughtful, and I've been very thankful for that during your time of service. Let me get through the vehicles and equipment. Again, this gives you a sense of the dollars that will be allocated, a total of 45.4 million. The investment areas of equipment, you see here, water and sewer with 4.1 million. IT gets a heavy investment this year, and I know Jason looks forward to going into more information with that. PD, again, another round of heavy investment. We've been very fortunate, by the way, within fire and rescue, we have really gotten caught up over the past few years, so it allows us a little bit more freedom with some of our other general fund departments. In terms of paving, we're recommending $400,000 from the Alabama Trust Fund, $900,000 from the gas tax distribution, and then 2.1 million from the general fund reserve fund for future improvement. On neighborhood drainage, we're recommending 100,000, it's the remaining funds left in the 2019 A, 260,000 in the GFRFBI, and then we have a direct recommendation from the GFRFBI, it's 500,000 of lining of corrugated pipes across the city based off needs. They felt like one of the things that could really assist us with begin mitigating the amount of sinkholes is let's, let's line as many of the corrugated metal pipes that we have remaining. As you know, and it's one of the first recommendations I made as mayor, is we no longer allow that, but we've inherited that, decades of it, and our engineering department thinks this would be a very positive step. So for the public that will either tuned in or watched portions of this or will look at it later, if you would like more information on our budget, you can go to tuscaloosa.com/23budget. Mr. Busby is our Chair of Finance. Our team looks forward to working with you on this budget. It's exciting to us to present this to you, and we look forward to making it better with your help and advice, the council. Other than anything that else or any questions that you may have, we look forward to the month of September and seeing what we can do for the people of Tuscaloosa.
Thank you, Mayor. We look forward to taking this and beginning to digest it and absorb it and appreciate the work on everybody's part that went into it. This is no small task. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day. Thank you very much.
Thank you.